order first item we had just discussed improve on plowing and lawn care management with CAP regarding covered bridge manor. Now, apparently, as I understand it, and
Dougie can speak to it.
Okay.
It might be ready.
All right, Doug.
All right.
Speak to it then.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I was asked to review if it was possible for Stratford County Maintenance to provide coverage for the next year for Covered Bridge Manor, which is on county property. It is managed by CAP and the facility is sub-managed by Advantage Management Group. Advantage Management Group no longer subcontractes lawn care or snow plowing services for any of their clients. So there was a big void there. They were in a real pinch. CAP was in a real pinch. I came in last minute, offered them a price that I thought was reasonable. Betsy Andrews Parker from CAP agreed to the price, and that's the contract that I came up with. So far, we have provided snow plowing and lawn care services on two occasions each, and I have not invoiced them until the Commissioners have reviewed this document that I've drawn up. It's not much of a, Mr. Chairman, it's not much of a burden on us to cover an extra two parking lots and a small area of grass right next to where we already service.
Well, that was the question I have. I mean, from the time, just from the time and perspective, I mean, are we losing money doing this? Are we bringing, what are we doing?
So one person on a, one person on a zero-turn lawnmower is between forty-five minutes to an hour to mow the lawn. We're not providing any trimming of brushes or anything like that. The residents take care of the rest of the landscaping over there.
Okay.
Snow plowing is hit or miss. I put a hundred dollar amount on there, I believe, but we don't plow until there's a minimum of, I believe, I put two inches, inch and a half to two inches.
An inch or more.
Yeah, an inch or more. It's standard stuff for us. We had a test run with this last storm, which was our first significant snowstorm, and I didn't get any negative feedback from the group.
You think a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a storm is pretty cheap.
Yeah, it's really cheap.
Sure.
I mean, but you've already, did you give me a tentative agreement with CAP regarding that? I mean, that just, that just seems like we're going to deal with a shovel on those people. Yeah.
Who pays for it now? Is it CAP? Is that a CAP's budget?
Correct. Right, they were subcontracting with, I'm sorry, it's not Advantage, it's Alliance Services Group. And Alliance Services Group would subcontract with other contractors to do the lawn care and do the snow plowing.
Yeah, the Housing Authority was involved in that before.
What? They were, but I believe they are not any longer. That may be who Alliance was subcontracting with.
It was Alliance, some property management.
Correct. They take care of the inside of the building. They take care of the facilities themselves.
Okay. Well, I don't, you know, if you think you've got the staff to do this, I don't mind doing it. I just, it just seems to me we can't be losing money at it.
Sure.
That's my only concern.
You know, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, you know, that I'll offer to have this go is that between Chris and I, you know, we can always help out, and we don't get paid, you know, for doing it. So it's not like it's a, right?
Mr. Chairman, the way that I arrived at the hundred dollar figure was I treated, in my mind, Covered Bridge as its own entity with trucks that are already in the area, with employees that are already being paid for, just looking at the square footage alone and the responsibilities that we have, keeping four exits clean and keeping the main thoroughfares clean.
So how are we going to help the residents coming down? You got a sidewalk over there and stuff, I mean, that could be shoveled by, who doesn't shovel that?
Oh, we do the sidewalk as well. There is a sidewalk over there.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that was a pass with the snow blower, the storm.
Is there any liability to the county if we're doing that work?
No, sir.
Nope.
It seems, it seems pretty cheap to me, but
Yeah, it seems cheap to me, too.
Yeah.
If, if he already kind of worked out an agreement, then I think you could try it for a year and then reassess it.
Nothing's, nothing's in storms.
No, I know, but did, did you quote anybody that price or?
Uh, it's on the, the form.
No, I saw the
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I presented it to her.
Yeah.
She went ahead and signed it.
I don't blame it aside.
You know, we can just try it.
There's, there's a bit of goodwill in there.
Yeah.
I know, I know that CAP is a partner agency of Stratford County and that Stratford County supports CAP and the actions that they do. And I also know that she was in a pinch at last minute. So when their budget cycle is, I know if I was in the same position in the end of the fall and I needed to sign a contract, I would have to wait a substantial amount of time to cement some sort of contractor to take care of those services.
Well, I think it's low, but, but I also do, I mean, if we can probably try it, if we want to try it, I mean, we may, maybe have ten storms a year roughly on
Right. We also, we also have several residents of the Covered Bridge facility that come down and volunteer in Riverside. They volunteer in the Activities Department.
Yeah.
And so far, we've probably made money because the two storms that we plowed have been nothing.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm sure there's going to be, you know, a lopper when, you know, there'll be a payback.
No, I suppose we can always revisit it as a one-year deal. Right?
Yes, that's my
So
So the payment will come in as miscellaneous revenue.
Yeah, and September thirtieth. Okay.
What are you guys going to do if you've got salt and sand?
We have two salt and sand machines. We have, yeah, Chevy and Ford F-250.
Are you going to charge more than a hundred dollars if you've got to go with salt and sand or?
Um, we pay right now a hundred and, a hundred and fourteen dollars a ton for sand, and that will fill the Sanders probably five or six times. So to sand that parking lot, a rough estimate, maybe twenty dollars worth of sand at the high end. I tend not to use a lot of salt in that area because it is a runoff for the Cachico.
Yep.
But we do put a little bit on, obviously, because of our elevation. It does freeze up pretty quickly. Once we get a good firm pack of the salt and sand down there, it pretty much maintains itself.
Okay, any other questions or comments from any of your colleagues? Well, you all said you're good.
Thanks.
All right, well, what's your pleasure on this? You want to do?
Well, you'll be, you're the one that has to deal with it. But I would say, because it's, you know, we are, this agreement started
Yeah.
in September, I think, right?
Until the first.
Yeah, so I don't see the harm in trying it for a year and then, you know, reassess it and
All right.
And I, I've spoken with Betsy at length about it and made it clear that, that our department and of course, the Commissioners have first refusal next year when it's time for renewal. If things don't go well for our department, obviously, I'll keep everybody abreast of that.
Yeah.
In the meantime.
I'd just like to make sure, I'd like to have you just keep track of our time over there. And we shouldn't count the counties being covered. That's the only thing I, I don't, if you think the staff has the time, and I know we're short staffed, so I think the staff's going to be there to do it.
His department's fully staffed.
His is, right. But are we going to rely on Community Corrections or something to help out or?
Oh, no question, but they do that anyway. I mean, they did that no matter who the vendor was.
Right.
Community Corrections, you know, shovels.
Yeah.
That's the first thing they do is shovel. They have their own shoveling route.
Right.
So to speak. But they've always done that anyways.
Okay. All right. All right, then, shall I contend motion?
Yeah, I move through. Through the time track.
I'll second.
Okay, now, here are those are favorite adoption I indicate by saying I, I suppose I vote unanimous. Okay.
We'll know when we get our tax bill next week.
Right. Right. There you go, right. All righty. Item two is a bid waiver request for two plow trucks that is in the two thousand twenty-four Riverside Rest Home capital budget. Who's going to do this, Dougie?
Doug.
All right, Doug.
Okay. For twenty twenty-four capital request for Riverside Rest Home, I put in a capital request for three plow trucks. These were Ford F-250s with snow plow packages, bed liners, Convenience Group being heated mirrors, and I believe there was a tow package involved there as well.
Right.
Yep, using, using the state bid process. I contacted McFarland Ford. I got a price from them. Availability has been the issue. We made the decision late in the year to go ahead, looking at what we had left for a budget. A lot of the items that we put in for capital requests, we did not take advantage of because we were able to do them on our own tooling account and through the creativity of our own maintenance department. We had some materials donated, so a lot of the things like heating pumps, those issues were being able to be resolved already. So we won't be putting in anything for those for the capital requests. I contacted Matt, the salesman at McFarland Ford, last week. He told me that availability of F-250s right now is very slim in a single cab, eight-foot bed configuration, your standard city truck, the ones that you see driving around. The crew cabs were more than we need and more than we wanted to pay for. He did offer to make a compromise on F-350s. He has two of them on the lot right now. So looking at the price from the state bid process from last year, there is some inflation. The current state bid offered by McFarland Ford does not contain a single cab, eight-foot bed F-250, only one ton dual wheel with a crew cab. So really, there's no apples-to-apples comparison. So when we look at the price, I believe we were at fifty thousand dollars just for the standard truck itself last year, and another eight thousand for the plows to be added, putting us at fifty-eight thousand. We are at total right now, all, all fees, taxes, and the plows included, at the amounts that you see on the sheet there, I believe it's sixty thousand and change and fifty-nine thousand and change for one tons, which would help us tremendously because we wouldn't have to put spring packages in the F-250s for the Sanders. These are, these are available in their lot, ready to go. And we don't feel like
But we had, we had three budgets, but we won't buy two because they
That's all that's available.
That's all that's available.
Yeah, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, speaking as someone who just bought a three fifty, I wish I, I didn't pay within ten thousand dollars of that, meaning I paid ten thousand dollars more without a plow.
Yeah.
I, I got the same vehicle, fifty-eight thousand without the plows.
So it looks like
Matt's, yeah, Matt really, he really sharpened his pencil to give us a tremendous deal on this. There was a lot of fees and
Is that for dual wheel?
A single wheel.
That's good.
Yeah, single wheel with a standard bed.
I think it's a lot easier plowing with a single
Sure, absolutely, tremendously, and especially with the heated mirrors and the Convenience Group that's in there. That'll allow us to do a really good job.
So usually, when we weigh bids, it's, it's because we're using the state bid. Tell me again why we can't use the state bid?
Any current state bid that is available on the website does not contain a F-250, a single cab, eight-foot bed configuration. That goes to the twenty twenty-five model year. The one that I bid the F-250s on expired in September.
But there's nothing comparable to that with the state bids?
Not currently on the website, but there is the F-350, which the added capacity is great, but it's the same footprint of the F-250. It's a lot more truck for about the same money, within a couple thousand dollars each on those trucks.
We have three fifty's in that truck. I don't want, I don't find them on my bids.
So the state has two fifty's?
They have a three fifty.
Oh, yeah.
They have, the state has three fifty.
Yeah.
They got, they have those, they just didn't have the two fifty.
Okay, so what we're, what you propose to buy is a two fifty?
A three fifty.
Oh, three fifty, okay.
Yeah, it's one of the next, it's the one, it's a one-ton versus.
But the best part is, is
But it's sand.
It will, he puts Sanders on him, too.
It'll hold the sand.
Right, right. My best estimate is that they shaved off somewhere between eight to ten thousand dollars each to make the deal happen.
Well, mine doesn't even have a thousand miles on it. It was, it was sixty-two without
So the three fifty's, but the three fifty's are in, within the, you know, the state bid price, right?
Yes, within about roughly two thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that was basing it off a bid that expired in September of this year. So those prices were made two years ago. And it's possible for inflation, they may be even more now if we were able to locate a single cab, eight-foot bed F-250.
I couldn't find another one. I couldn't find a single cab, three fifty, and now mine's a Dodge, okay? I'll tell you, but I've looked, I looked at every Dodge dealer in New Hampshire, and I couldn't find a single cab three fifty, which is what I wanted.
Yeah, that's what I had. I had a single cab, a three fifty.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted, so.
I have a fun guy.
It's a good truck. Oh, it's a good truck. I didn't pay the fifty-eight for it, thank God, but it was used, so I got it. Lucky to get it because I couldn't find it with one, I looked for a usual for a year.
I looked for about a month, and I gave up.
Yeah.
Tri-City had one.
Yeah. I got the last one in last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we did a couple, a couple of these ones.
Yeah.
What happened to those? Those go in the
No, we'll, well, these were to replace other ones that we've already junked.
Oh, they, okay, because they said they were retired, yeah.
Yeah, they, yeah, they were, they're already retired, but we am
Does those go in that?
Yeah, they want, yes, yes, don't you remember the rusty old, I want the rusty red one?
I want the rusty red one?
Yeah.
A pile of bucks.
Yeah.
Whatever it was. All right, well, I guess we'll go forward with it. I don't have any problems against the three fifty. I like the three fifty's anyway because they're stronger, they're rugged, and they, they'll carry some cargo. They'll carry some weight, two fifty's. I mean, they'll probably carry it, but probably for three fifty's. And it's a lot, two grand difference.
Yes.
I don't have any issue with it. If you guys want to go with the way you did, I need a motion to do that.
Okay, well, I, you okay with it?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I, I don't like to deviate
I know.
From, you know, but by given the fact that, you know, the whole bonding took, took a while.
Yeah.
We're kind of in this position that
As in a tough position
Right.
Because if that bond didn't go through at the last delegation meeting, he couldn't have gotten the charts because I would have needed it to finish the roof.
Yeah, so I, so I understand. So given all the circumstances, I think you're probably getting the best price you would get if you put up a bid or whatever. So I, I'll make the motion to waive the bid to accept some of these.
Okay.
I'll second.
Anything else, Scott, from, my name, that requires a rule called Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rule.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, the motion ends, okay. All right. Item three.
Dougie worked with Diane.
I know how people you are about.
Yeah.
One thing about Commissioner Watson, he's always awarded bids on everything.
Well, she was hesitating after the
I know, I know. I understand. Okay. Item three, then, discussing health insurance rebates. You're doing that, all right.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, Diane, we got some health insurance rebates from um, our vendor. As you know, a portion of that health insurance rebate goes back to the employees.
Yeah.
What we've done is instead of cutting checks for everybody that has it, what we do is forgive them
What should I do, premium?
Well, of a week.
Yeah.
It's about six tenths of a, of a week, but we really can't split it. So my rec, we are a little over-revenue with that. So my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, is, is just to forgive the employees one week of contribution. Uh, and, and we are, obviously, we get, we get the bulk of it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but they, because they pay, they're entitled to it.
Right.
So Diane's kind enough to do all the math out and and my, well, you know
Well, get the column of checks.
Yeah, it's a calculation.
It's just easier to just turn off that, that item that gets paid to everybody. Just turn it off, and they don't get that amount for one week, or that deduction for one week, so.
What is that? I know it's a range, but
Well, for, for example, a non-union single plan is thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Or wait. Yeah. And then double it and then triple it.
So it's just a little bit, but
Well, Merry Christmas.
Well, they've been asking, and frankly, Mr. Chairman, Diane was kind enough to do it a couple weeks, a few weeks ago, and I've been delaying putting it on the agenda till
Well, I get it.
Because I need to talk to the union about it. Obviously, you know, they're hoping that you'll go along with it.
That will be a issue.
Endeavor equals, you know, an even timeframe, you know.
We always round up.
We always, we've historically always rounded up.
Probably wouldn't sit well if we rounded down.
Oh, no.
Yeah, if you round it down, it'd be zero, you know.
Yeah. Got you. Okay, so I got a motion to accept that.
That's okay.
Second. So for next week, you want to do it?
Yeah, do, well, no, yeah, I just need to put a memo out.
Because we only, I mean, we're, we only have two weeks left.
I'll, I'll attach it to everybody's paycheck and/or stuff for Thursday.
All right, so we'll do it for next week because the following week's going to be kind of, it's Christmas week and to
I'll, I'll, I'll post it and send emails out so
Okay, so I, if you let everybody know, I'll get that.
No, I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it tonight.
Okay.
So everybody will have it for when they get their checks tomorrow.
Okay, I'll make a note to turn that
Tomorrow? I'm sorry, when they get their paychecks
Tomorrow you'll
Right, what I will, what I want to do is attach a notice to their tomorrow's check so that they'll know, they won't come to me, or they won't come to payroll and say, how come I got more money? You know, they'll, they'll understand that it's only, and they'll also understand it's only for one week.
Got you. All right, so I have a motion. End of the second. All those are fair and proportionate. All right, those are both voting endless. All right. That's done, so we're going to move on to budget, budget workshop now.
Occupational therapy.
Yeah.
And we have our occupational therapist here, so.
Glad to introduce her to everyone here and everybody in the world.
Sure, Christine.
Jill Petrie.
Jill Petrie, Sean Lewis. You're on, kid.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Christine Tieran, Occupational Therapy Director over at Riverside. Been there for approximately thirteen, fourteen years. Um, so thank you for your time today. I'm here to present the budget. Occupational Therapy Department consists of two occupational therapists, full-time, and we provide OT services to residents at Riverside and Hyder. We have a pretty big presence in the building for the department of two. We, occupational therapy is very first in, in many areas. We also perform swallowing assessments for residents there as well to determine the safest food texture and liquid consistencies. And last year, we had introduced a new service that's contracted through SDX Dysphagia Company where we use like this little spaghetti-like tooth that we stick up someone's nose, and we get kind of like a bird's eye view of their swallowing function. If I was a little bit more organized, I would have had a video for you today, but unfortunately, it was kind of a busy day. It's really something that has been beneficial to the residents there and to medical providers. It allows us to make good decisions as to what's appropriate for their food textures and liquids, and it also helps the families to understand what the limitations are when you have something that's diagnostic. The study is performed at bedside, which is helpful, you know, despite the minor, you know, inconvenience of having something in your nose. Residents do appreciate being able to be in their space. We have them eating and drinking real time. There's a computer screen, so we're able to provide them It's very small, yeah, yeah, and it is uncomfortable because you're passing it through outside. Oh, yeah. Yeah, but it's, it's something that, it's really helpful. It also allows us to give the residents some real-time feedback as to what's going on with their swallowing. And it allows us to work on like swallowing strategies because if they have decreased sensation, if they don't know that something's in the back of their throat, we kind of work on techniques, and then we carry it over and work with that. So that's kind of the biggest thing. I did
I get a question from the chair. What was the difference between a physical therapist and an occupational therapist?
Ah, so occupational therapy is really what occupies your time and what is interested, and what you're interested in doing. So it can range, it's all ages, pediatrics to geriatrics, obviously. They're in school settings, hospitals, so it could be something where if you're, need to do your bathing, dressing, toileting, if someone has had surgical procedure, we're pretty creative. There's adaptive equipment that to help you put on your own shoes and socks. And it's something just to kind of, it's, it's very individualized for the person. For example, we have a resident this past summer who really, really enjoys spending time outside, and she unfortunately had no way to reach staff like when she needed to come in. So one thing, we just kind of problem solve and create it. She has like this wireless kind of like doorbell that she would ring or wireless remote. And so, you know, for her, that's, that was an important and meaningful task for her so she can enjoy the sunlight, which is something, and read outside. So it might seem like a small thing, but it just took a little bit of problem solving and being creative. And I think that's something that we do really well over there. So, no, that's quite answers that.
But, you know, it is a CMS requirement for an occupational therapy assessment for everybody that comes in. One other thing that Christine shared with me but didn't share is that there is a billing mechanism for outside of our daily rate, of which occupational therapy, and I'm sure I know the numbers, it was seventy-six thousand dollars was generated by the work that's done by the two occupational therapists. So we're required to have them, but when they do the extra things that fall outside of out of normal, out of normal nurse, of what's covered in the normal nursing rate, we can bill Medicare for those things. And it was the projection through the end of December's seventy-six thousand dollars. The other thing is, I just want to be clear that whenever I need the unusual thing done, the, the, the other thing that Christine does is all of our evaluations regarding the residents' mental abilities to make decisions. It's called a MOCA, but I, I couldn't tell you what the initials stand for. But Christine and her fellow occupational therapists do all those MOCA's, and it's tremendously helpful for us, for us to decide whether they need guardians or, you know, have the capacity to name somebody as, as
As a guardian.
Or, or durable power of attorney, you know, whether they have the capacity to do that. It also helps our doctors who order those tests frequently, so frequently now that Christine just kind of does them on, on new admissions to help them to determine whether the resident really has an understanding of their medical condition. As you know, that's a requirement. You know, that we need to be clear with the resident about their expectations, our expectations, and we need to be clear with the guardian and the power of attorney. And so all those MOCA's are done by the two occupational therapists.
We do that assessment upon admission, and then that helps when there's a change in mental status, you know, for the residents. It also helps the physicians, the providers with medication management if they are considering making any adjustments. And they found that it's been a really useful baseline tool that we're able to use and look back on.
And as you can see from the budget, there's no increase from, there's a small decrease from last year.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I see the remaining, or spent, or remaining balance of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and one. Why, how come you haven't spent? You seem so, you should be up close to, it's the end of the year.
It's a little, it's a little confusing because Christine's salary is split between two, two different departments.
Activities, right?
No, it's, it
SBU.
Oh, the SBU, yeah.
Yeah, the behavior unit, so you'd probably, when you look at the behavior unit budget, you'd find it, you know, that's higher percentage spent, so this, this amount will take us through the rest of the year.
But that's, this is just through the third quarter, through the third quarter.
Right.
Right, so you know, one, you know, we, we don't have the SBU to look at today.
No, sir, not today. Yeah, as you know, nursing, SBU, and, and the House of Correction are by far the largest financially and certainly the most difficult budget. I don't even have drafts yet, and then I have to, you know, go through the drafts.
Yeah.
So I, I expect that by, within the next week.
Okay.
If not next week, the, the following meeting, whenever you guys decide to do that.
Yeah.
You know, with Christmas being on a Wednesday this year.
Yeah. So, anyone else have any questions to bring out? Your colleagues, any question?
Doing what you're doing, you're doing a good job.
Yeah.
I remember the first practice program it was.
Correct.
And how confusing it was at first.
Yes.
That's a great show.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it has evolved. Yeah.
Happy holidays.
The other thing is Christine's going to be instrumental in helping us for that, particularly that first month when Mike Morris is you know, remember, we talked about his retirement last time, Christine's going to be instrumental in, in helping us sign off on and do some assessments. You know, that, and my hope is that we rarely have to use the outside consultant that I budgeted for for that month's period of time. She's been very kind to help us.
Okay, what do we got next one?
Not, not to mention, by the way, that her son is a super athlete. In multiple sports.
So last time you were talking about, he was looking at colleges, what did he decide on?
Correct, he was actually recruited to play baseball at F A B College in New York.
Yeah.
And he recently got his acceptance letter into the D P T, Department of Physical Therapy Program. So he has some good, some good opportunities in front of him, so he's just finishing up his senior year strong. And we're playing basketball season, just started right now, and then rolling into baseball, so.
What school does he play for?
He is in Marshwood, local high school.
Oh, good. Well, I got, I got some grandkids here.
Oh, okay.
Play basketball.
Nice young man. And a big kid. Very tall. Very tall. And just very polite, courteous.
Best thing Romans could ever do.
Sure.
Thanks, kid.
Happy holidays. Okay, there we go.
And there you are.
Alrighty, much fun with the favor here.
Grab the seat, you mind, Paul?
I favor the pile of all. Oh my God. Management information's there.
So what might be helpful, Paul, is to hit on the increase.
Yeah, so I'm presenting the budget, I tried to keep it flat as requested. There is an increase, and it was in the two-two-nine budget.
I see that, yeah.
And that was from three items, two were, it's the firewall and our mail spinner filter. When we purchased those back five years ago, we got the support with that purchase. And the support's now ended from what, the prepaid support.
Right, prepaid support, that was a five-year deal.
And so now we're just picking up that support to continue. The third one is Waster, that was a program that the restaurant picked up for billing for the Medicare and Medicaid. And it's increased our revenue quite a bit. When they first started, it was right near the end of the year when we were coming up with the budget, when we were only getting a bill of like three hundred a month. And then afterwards, the true bill of eight hundred plus came, so that's just the adjustment to reflect the actual cost.
But getting this software allowed me to cut a position. Now, you haven't seen that yet, because you haven't reviewed that budget. But when you see that budget, you'll see that when the position became vacant, I decided not to fill it. And simultaneous with that, brought somebody over from the jail who knows how to do that billing. And she comes over, it depends how busy it is, either weekly or every other week, to do that billing within the hours, within her normal work hours. So by doing that, it's, it's, we were able to remove a position, just not, choose not to fill it when he left.
And the subscription you mentioned, it was five years, it ran out.
Well, when we purchased, when we made that, that purchase, right.
So what, what you have in here, is that for another five years or?
No, this is a year to year, and just maintaining.
The other thing, as I know, you know, Commissioners, we went through a thorough audit with Primex, you know, because Primex is getting very
Yeah, they're getting touchy about technology.
They're getting real touchy about issuing us policies when it comes to technology. Because they've had such great losses, not with us, but with other clients. And they've hired a firm, you know, that's put us through a variety of exercises. And, and we've done really well with those exercises. In fact, we're just waiting, we're, you know, our email's going to be switching to, instead of C O dot Stratford dot N H I U. We're going to be moving to dot gov.
Dot gov, right.
Uh, which has better, better protection, so.
How's that, how's that, when that transferred, we're supposed to move, we're, we're in the process of doing that, right?
We are, and the state, the contract, they agreed to another group to help facilitate that.
Okay.
We put in the application, that's been accepted. I sent an email about a month ago, just to bring us to attention again.
Right, to find out when they're going to be doing it. Be working with us, right, at some point to figure that, that switch over.
So I think they just took the applications as they came in and worked through them.
Make these copies. So the technology is from my, for the two new commissioners, has been ongoing upgrading, most of the time, we go five years or more, sometimes it's longer than that, with software and hardware. Now, we had a big request in our capital plan this year. The delegation did vote for it, that has, well, there's half of that, almost half of the answer, I'm going to do it from memory right now, I don't have it in front of me. For those technology upgrades. In both cases, you really, you need, you gotta have them, because today, the world is, I'll tell you, you run a business, the world is so crazy that you too many people try to attack us, so moving to that dot gov, we do that, and more security, the Fed wants to do it, everybody wants to do it. Contracts and grants, and for everything else, I'm like a son.
Paul, can you give us an idea of how many hits you've been seeing in that, that our firewall is rejected? I know you gave me a number.
It's over, it was like a couple million, within a week, not, not hits. About a couple million requests go out from the county to websites. And I think
Insanity. You gotta have these, they're expensive, but you gotta have them, you gotta have them.
Yeah, five hundred thousand come back as being blocked because they're suspicious or
Just to give you an idea of, of, you know, what, what we had, and, and obviously, we have the, the, the most sensitive information. You know, we have health information on all the residents and all the inmates.
And their social security numbers.
Uh, uh, everybody's social security number, everybody's health records.
Yeah. Everything, access to all of it, whatever it is. Whenever it comes to this, I always go, yeah, you've got, I got it, because it's, it's just, and it's constant, it's not like it's just not constant.
For a business like any other business, it has to be protected.
These guys know what they're doing, so.
Well, plus the whole department manages the whole county with two people.
Right, two people, yeah.
So you'll never be able to leave part.
And I have that time going on vacation.
No, he, no, we, we actually, depending on where he goes, we, Sandy actually activates his phone so we can reach him.
Yeah. Great. Alright, you guys have any questions for Paul?
Yeah, I see your education and travel, you got money left over quite a bit.
And truly was just that, the education opportunity that, to work on it. It was out in California, it was just
Nice place to live.
It is, but it was expensive, and so it just, we had a postcon this year on that.
Where, where you go?
Well, it, it's moved all around, and so they move it to get different locations.
Yeah, I went to San Diego, what, two thousand nineteen, bad. Drugs, people homeless. I used to live up here, and, you know, the service.
The weather's always consistent, right?
Yeah, I hear.
Alright, any other questions for Paul, we got the M I S things.
What, what's, what's the cost of, did you figure, for that, whatever training he was talking about?
Only in California? Oh, putting, I really off the top of my head, I can't remember, maybe it was four, five thousand.
Is there anybody who cut that?
The better question would be, what's the plan for this year?
Well, the, the plan is hopefully that we will be taking for training, that's not only just conferences, sometimes there is training that's offered online, you know, online or through different programs that cost.
Yeah, I, I know, I, I, I got a degree in digital, so I know it takes a lot of time.
Right, so if I do that for the two of us, that's where the money would be.
We have, Paul has some signatures for the new commissioners and yourself, George.
Yeah, I don't know, it's Digitize your signature. They just wanted black pen, where you would sign twice, you know, with your name.
I got a black one if somebody needs it.
Three lines.
Yes, it has to be And that's why they want it twice.
Did I give you the long?
I'm sorry, I gave you the longer.
Good.
I apologize, I was getting another one down here. Your name? I can't see. Oh, no.
Just keep them for next week or something.
May, maybe we could just
Because everyone is far behind on their schedule, that's all.
Maybe we could just show it, remember that housekeeping that I told you I needed to make a correction on, and we cut the position? I just wanted to show you the update.
It's in this pile here?
No.
Yeah, I'd like to see more of that yellow, if we could.
Doing the best I can.
Alright, it helps.
But it showed about flat last time, and, and we'd eliminated the position, and you asked about why it didn't show in the bottom line. I just, I just wanted to show you the corrected version, that's all.
Good, thank you. Okay, you got your, you got your signature, Paul?
Yes.
Any other questions, we got any M I S budget for now? Okay, alright, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Moving to the next one.
We have Community Corrections is next, and then we'll go after that, and then this is after that. Okay, so I'm gonna, there are
Turn them over there, I'll grab them.
These are each person's?
Yep, okay, thanks, Paul. Thanks for jumping in so quickly. Yeah, it was last minute, with some of our schedule, we couldn't make it, so Paul was kind enough to jump in. So Carrie will have multiple budgets to present.
Yeah.
You're on, kid.
Nice to you. Excuse me, my name is Carrie Conway, I oversee criminal justice programs for the county. So we are going to start with the six-one-oh-two tonight, the community corrections. I did print out. Nice to meet you. Printed you out some material about our programs, and I know that you're familiar, but I don't think so. For you as well, alright. So the six-one-oh-two, community corrections, as some of you know, we supervise defendants in the community. We supervise, to date, we have five hundred and seventy-one people on our programs that we sentence, that we supervise in our community at the moment. Our budget is down a little bit this year, and I'm happy to tell you all about our programs, I'm happy to field questions however you see fit.
The bottom line is, Sean, just so you know, when we built the new jail, there was a decision about supporting people who really didn't need to be incarcerated in the community, but still keep an eye on them. So they don't, you know, commit another act while they're waiting to be criminal act, while they're waiting to be adjudicated on the first criminal act. And that can vary from something as simple as phone calls to something as restrictive as ankle bracelets. And, and also drug testing, it's all based on what, well, it's based on two things. Every inmate that comes in prior to them being, that's being held on bail, prior to them going in front of the judge, community corrections assesses them. So they come in five, six in the morning, assess them, and then submit that paperwork to the court. So the court has some basic information, truthful information, not necessarily from just the inmate. So that the judge can make a more informed decision. Otherwise, our jail would just be full, you know. We'd already be looking to build an addition, instead, we have about eighty to ninety pre-trial inmates in the jail. And Carrie's group monitors five hundred and seventy-four in the community. And, and pretty darn successfully too.
Failure to appear rate this year was two percent.
And, and if you look at a failure to appear rate, even in people who post a cash bail, you're looking more towards fifteen percent. And I think, you know, because, you know, we're on they're on, we're constantly on them about reporting, we're constantly on them about drug testing. And if they fail in the community, we work through the county attorney's office to provide them information and ask the court to revoke, you know, their release. And they end up back in jail if, if they don't comply with the rules that the court sets.
What do you guys do with the mentally, the mental?
Sure, sure.
That's the biggest sin, go ahead, Carrie.
So that's, that is one of our, many years ago, we did a study, and that was a huge cost at our facility, just psychiatric medications alone, never mind the ethical piece behind it, but we have a mental health core program that we send people to. We also have a specialized mental health supervision program where we have staff that are trained in certain mental health you know, languages, motivational interviewing type of situations where we link people to resources in the community. We have MOUs with many different agencies in the community to fast-track them to appointments for intensive case management, where we do medication checks, we have collaborative partners like The Van. So we can get people into appointments quickly, we can get them reduced Collaborative partners like the VAN, so we can get people into appointments quickly, we can get them reduced medications. But also, also hold them accountable to if they have the victim, victims, we can monitor them in the community. Um, we have, uh, programs where we can help people get discounted medications, find, um, shelters to go to and all of that, so we are. Our mental health numbers have grown significantly over the years, um, are duly diagnosed, it's usually mental health and substance misuse together.
The biggest, the biggest sin. That, that we, we've identified over the years is incarcerating a mentally ill person. You know, yes, they've committed a crime, but they've committed a crime because they're mentally ill. So we, i- if when they come in, uh, to the jail. Through the booking process, they've identified as having a, a, you know, a mental health problem. That's a separate assessment that's done over there by one of our trained mental health people. And the court can frequently make orders, and I'll just give you kind of a classic example of an order. Uh, held at the House of Correction until the psychiatrist comes in and assesses them. Um, and then, you know, released. Um, on community mental health supervision. Most of, and correct me where I'm wrong here about the statistic area, but most, most of the, the mental health people that we have. Are people that have already established themselves with a mental health provider, and they've gone off their meds. You know, honestly, so we, our psychiatrist will reassess the meds, you know. May, and we get them started on their meds.
Right.
But those meds are hugely expensive, some of them can be hugely expensive. So the fact that we can get them out and, you know, Medicaid can pay for their meds, or instead of. The county paying for their meds is, is a huge cost savings in the medical department at the jail. It's a massive savings, yes, we have to start them off. You know, there's some initial costs, but i- if we had to keep them for months, uh, the cost would be, our, our medical budget would double. Easily, because it's just so expensive.
All, all our alternative sentencing programs, no matter which one it is, they all have it anywhere from a four to ten to one property tax savings. Yeah, it's been full, everyone. So if we didn't have them, these programs, you can, you have that cost, you can. Multiply it by four, you know, or up to ten, depending on which program it is, and you'd have them across the street.
No, and, and that would, that would stop us from boarding inmates. And, and, you know, because all our space would be filled up with our own inmates. So the fact that we have eighty or ninety of our own pretrial inmates and, and we're watching five hundred and seventy four in the community. Well, you know, I'll be honest with you, when, when we first started, I was hoping for two to one.
Right.
You know, I, I don't think I ever envisioned, you know, of, of better than five to six to one. Uh, ratio that we have, and, and that's a tribute to Carrie and her staff, um. And, and, and leading us in, in this. Could you just take two minutes, Carrie, and, and talk about, uh, the, the new assessment tool?
Sure, we, um, back from a pretrial conference, um, it was brought to our attention that there's something called the public safety assessment. It's a best practice tool used, uh, mostly in the Midwest to West. Um, and we're, we're actually the first county in New Hampshire to start using it, and we just started using it on Monday. And it's a tool where we go in in the morning and assess our folks, uh, for bail appropriateness. And there's scores that we give to the judge, and there's a matrix that says if they score. You know, a four and a four, then they should be on this level of supervision. So our job is to provide the judge, we've had, um, meetings with our stakeholders, the county attorney was involved, all of our judges. Uh, we invited the police departments and we've educated everyone on the tool, everyone had buy-in where we agreed. What our violent offense is gonna look like and all of that. Um, and we went live with it on Monday, and so far, we've had great, um, reception, the judges all have it laminated at their desks in the circuit courts and they're. They're going off it saying, okay, well, this looks like this should be the supervision, and, uh, we've had great feedback so far, so our job is. To give the judge the information and, and he or she is making a decision as whether or not they wanna follow the matrix, or they can order whatever they want. But we are on a best, using a evidence-based best practice tool. Um, and I know, Mr. Petrie, you could speak to this, but we are truly are a leader in the state when it comes to community correction. And that is because of the support that we've had.
Because we in the legislature actually. Made it possible for other counties to do what you do, you know that.
Thank you.
And, uh, you know, that's, that's big, that's big. One of, one of the questions I had was your recidivism rate. For drug court and others.
Yeah, our recidivism, so as you know, um, in drug court, we take high risk, high need. So if we had, um, a recidivism rate of. Twenty percent, I'd be concerned that we weren't taking the right people, right, because high risk, high need, um, we expect a certain percentage to fail. At some point, so the national average for recidivism rate for a drug court is usually around fifty to sixty percent. We're right in the middle, we're about a fifty-five percent.
So it's going down since the last time I asked you?
Right, right.
It's, um, you know, it's, it's a drug addiction, it's no secret.
Is it because, i- is it because more drugs are available, you think?
I, I think so, I mean, I think the, the scope of, I think the lethality. Is really presenting an issue, I think the long-term side effects of methamphetamine use, fentanyl use, I think that it's taking a toll on our populations, um. Just physical health and.
Economy is all. It's, it's, it, the lack of affordable housing, I mean, all that stuff. Ties into mental health and drug, substance abuse. Society that's, that's, doesn't have a lot of. The lack of hope for, especially the low, lower middle class and the poor, you know, it's difficult for them to climb out of the hole. They just can't, it's impossible, so they, you know, they do other things. And that's, that's a national statistic as well, that's been proven, proven fact.
But anyway, you guys, keep going, Carrie.
Okay, any questions on six one oh two? So six one oh three, I'm gonna give the floor to Scott Hampton, I can switch seats with you, guys. He's next in the memorable world.
Favorite number six one oh three.
Used to be my academy budget number.
Visitation, so, um, I don't know if everyone knows what we're all about. What we've been doing for the last little over ten years now is operating a supervised visitation center, which very briefly is a place where. Non-custodial parents can spend time with their kids in a safe environment. These are domestic violence cases, sexual assault, child abuse, stalking, all is involved, and. With, without a supervised visitation center. These visits are gonna happen anyway, you know, the courts are always going to lean in the direction of parent-child access. And what happens is then these visits occur at McDonald's, at the public library, in the parking lot of a, of a police station. And, um. Bad start as a way of happening, if you even had a fatality in New, in New Hampshire, add a visitation center that wasn't. Following its, I see a lot of head nods, wasn't following its, its standards, so one of the things we know, in New Hampshire, um. If you look at all the homicides that happen in New Hampshire, more than half of them every year are domestic violence related. That's a shocking number, right, ninety-two percent of the homicide-suicide combinations, domestic violence related. So, and what we know is that the most dangerous time isn't while they're living together. Even though they have twenty-four seven access, the most dangerous time is during separation. Now, separation can be asking for a protective order, it can be, uh, calling, uh, you know, a, a realtor, calling an attorney. Or exchanging the kids, that seems to be the prime time when everyone's in danger, exchanging the children when someone's in danger. So that's why we, we started offering this, um, back in two thousand and twelve is when we opened our doors after about two years of, of, of planning. We were fortunate enough to get, um, a full run for ten years until the statute no longer allowed it, um, to get federal funding to cover everything. They paid all of our expenses and, and then some, and I just paid for the visitation. But the last round of funding, we actually were considered a, a demonstration site, if we were doing the, the visitation. We were developing a, a, a training platform for the courts and their partner agencies were off, were facilitating access to civil legal assistance. So we're doing a number of different things, so other, um, jurisdictions around the country could model what we're doing. So if you look at the, um, at the budget, what you'll see is there's a decrease of about thirty-seven thousand dollars. The reason for that is those other tasks that we had, working with civil legal assistance, the training, all that, we've done. We've accomplished all those goals, that testament. What we're looking for now is, okay, so where we've been has been offering this service, the good news is that over the last ten years. Um, after working with hundreds and hundreds of families, we've had zero people being harmed. So we know what we're doing, uh, cause what we do is we have, you know, a deputy sheriff on duty and, and we've got very tight, uh, the whole structure of the facility and. And very clear policies and procedures, our parent handbook has some like fifty-one different rules. You know, to make sure that we're very clear about that, so now we're in a transition period, so we're like, okay. We've, we've used up all the federal dollars we can for that particular federal piece, we have two options that we're going to be approaching, um. I think we have a summary, looks like it's. A pretty where we are that.
Here we go. Did we get that?
Um, you may have, uh, what, what it's called is visitation cent- visitation center funding opportunities? Great, great, okay, okay, so that, that's our, there, there are two options we're looking at. First of all, we're looking at state funding, now back in nineteen, in, in two thousand and nineteen, House Bill five sixty-five. Um, was calling for visitation centers to be, um, set up in all, all ten counties. Yeah, and we got to the point actually where we had in the state budget, funding for three centers. It was, it was, the ink was dry, it was all there until like eleven fifty seven. And, and then there was a, a budget cutback in HHS and, uh, it, it got erased, okay? So we have long-term memory problems, we're doing it again, um. So what we've done, and this may also be in your paperwork, is, um, Jody Nelson from, um, Derry. Um, uh, has introduced now LSR, the Legislative Service Request. That's a modification of what we had back then, but basically the, the same piece, that was introduced just a, a few weeks ago. And so we're gonna be working over the next, uh, several months in developing a new bill for that. So that, that's one thing, that's where we want this to go, we want the entire state to, um, get funding for, by the state for each of these centers. I'm gonna stop there, we have another alternate, another option, and what this involves is, there's another. Um, and, I mean, if you, if you have this paperwork as well, there's, um. A, a funding stream through the Office of Violence and Violence Women, the same department we got funding with before. Um, it's called ICJR, which is Improving Criminal Justice Response, and they have like twenty-eight different purpose areas that you can apply for. So there, there are two that we would apply for, the primary one, um, is for family justice centers. And as you may know, we were one of the two communities in New Hampshire that had a family justice center, and just the, the Reader's Digest version. It's the one-stop shopping place where you get representatives from multiple agencies, law enforcement, child protective, um, um, victim service. All sitting in the same building so that you didn't have to drive all around town trying to get all these appointments, which can be quite a burden. So, great concept, very helpful, but what we found was it was underutilized, tremendously underutilized. I became really curious about that, so over the last, hmm, about two and a half years, I conducted several focus groups with survivors. And this may also be in your paperwork, now I have copies of this, and. My question for them was, do you like the concept of this one-stop shopping? And are you able to access it, is it something you'd be able to use, or are there barriers that somehow get in the way of your being able to use it? Turns out, they gave, gave me thirty-one different barriers. You know, um, I can't get there when it's open, I'm working during the day, they close in the evenings, um, my, uh, I have, I have a physical disability. My abuser drives me everywhere, he's not about to drive me to the appointment, my primary language is in English, and so on and so forth. So it's a great concept, but is there a way for us to, um, overcome or address each of these barriers? So one of the things we learned back in COVID was that there are a number of services that we need to provide to victim survivors and to the perpetrators. And to the children. That we didn't think we could provide in a virtual environment, but it turns out out of necessity we had to. So for instance, survivors can at home, um, download a form, the domestic violence petition off the website and fill it out at home. In the comfort of their home, instead of going up to the court clerk's office and the person's impatient, when there's a lot of stuff going on, and just in, in her own time. So, there are a number of things, like for instance, what if your primary language is Swahili? How many folks do you suppose at the court clerk's office speak Swahili or have forms written in that? Well, we have an option such as Google Translate. Yeah, so, you, you, you download, you, you go on, you go onto the site. Um, we're, which we'd be developing as a virtual family justice center, you go on and you look at these flags, you push the one first Somali or whatever your country is. It downloads it and translates it into your language, you fill it out, you send it back to the court, they push. Good old American flag, and you got this English version, and is it perfect? Of course not. Is it better than nothing? By a long shot, right, so what we, so if you go through that list of thirty-one obstacles. Every single one of those, we could address through a virtual environment, so. What OBW is presenting, that you can present, um, if, uh. A project for doing a family justice center, either to create one or to enhance one. What we would do is we would do that, there's five hundred thousand dollars available for three years, and if what you do is focus at least forty percent of your. Time, effort, resources to addressing sexual assault, which is part of what we wanna do, that's easy enough, you can get an additional two hundred thousand. And then, after those three years are up, had, if you did that combination, you could go into a non-competitive pool. To get a two-year extension for that, so this is what we wanna do, if, if it's something that the, the, the county would be interested in. We would like to develop this, this would be the first in the country, right, so what we, we wanna address the needs locally here. But what we also wanna do is to create a template that could then be handed off to different, you know, communities around the country. And it'd be more, sort of like plug and play, they could then insert their own individual pieces, um, to make a work for their community. Cause obviously Cheyenne, Wyoming's different than Brooklyn, New York, right, so, um, that's, that's what we're looking at. That proposal last year came out in the mid to late February, um, the, uh, the application was due the beginning of May. And then the funding was began later in that year. The reason I mention that in the context of the visitation center is that we can, we can overlap the two services. So for instance, the office space that we would use for developing the family justice center would be at the visitation center, so now we could. Probably take five sevenths of the cost of rent and attach it to that grant, um, we could also overlap staffing, so.
Yeah, so where you, I mean. We just got done going through all this, I mean, this is, so this is a virtual one?
Completely virtual, I'm not.
Kids are gonna pay for this through BAW, basically?
Yeah, and I'm not talking, in, in fact, I've already run this by, um, Debbie Tanaka, she's one of the, uh, uh, one of the program managers for, uh, OBW. I do a lot of peer review for them to look at grant applications, I was down in Washington reviewing a different grant application. And I ran the idea by her, she loved it, she thought it was a great idea, so, um. So yeah, it would be an entirely virtual thing, it's not just a website, this is a really interactive. Oh, it has to be totally. Yeah, the, the model is, is similar to, um, Amazon, think about the booksellers, right? Dalton, you know, Walden, they've all disappeared except for one, which was Barnes and Noble. What Barnes and Noble figured out is when, once Amazon showed up and said, hey, I, I, I can, I can get you books a lot easier than having to drive sixty miles to get to your nearest. Your bookstore at three o'clock in the morning, which isn't open anyway, and so, and, and so when Amazon did that, Barnes and Noble said. We need not just a brick and mortar place, great, it's nice to go there and have some cappuccino and read a magazine while you're deciding what to buy. But it's not always practical, and so Barnes and Noble said, we need an online presence as well, and they've survived because they realized. Brick and mortar is horse and buggy. The other thing is that abusers, they're the ones who are already doing the online stuff, right, the cyber stalking, they're experts at this. We are. Way behind the curve, and this is an opportunity for us to catch up and, 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 and address the real needs of people.
So, and, 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 and applying for this, what's, what's our, uh, what's, what's our, what's our skin in the game in terms of? The cost, whether it's fifteen, twenty, but what's the skin? Zero in each initial, right?
So.
So it goes three, you said two, three, two years and three years?
Three years, well, three years, if we do the, so it'd be three years, if we do the sexual assault pieces, three years for seven hundred thousand dollars a year.
Right.
What we would do is, the up, upfront cost that would not be continued, cause all is a significant chunk of tech. Right, we need a tech person to come in and set up the whole platform kind of thing.
Yeah.
So, in terms of an ongoing cost of this, it's compared to a family justice centers in minimal. You don't, you don't need much of a physical space, what you need is probably one person. Well, you need a tech person to be, cause you always have to work on that, the other thing you need is just one person who would be like a triage agent. So someone goes on, on, into the virtual site and is trying to sort of figure out where to go and they got questions. You need someone that can respond to the chats or, or respond to a phone call, and who can navigate and help direct people in certain directions. But beyond that, that's all you need, that's, that's the entire staffing, everything else is just happens in-house at all the other agencies. So with colocation in a virtual environment, rather than having to try and bring everyone into the, a physical site.
Right.
Which is, has minimal impact.
Well, we, you know, we've had, we've, we've done that.
Yeah, and it, it just, it's not getting used very much.
Well, the other thing too is that, you know, the younger people are so tech savvy, that's all they know.
Yeah.
Right, so it's not like the old days where they.
That's right.
They come to a physical place and they have the rooms and all the other stuff, I mean, young people that, that were. that experience all these parts of problems are all in their twenties and they're all, most, majority twenties or thirties. And I know the police has been talking about the fact that about sixty percent of their calls, uh, are domestic violence calls now. And they've been talking to us about what the county can do to, to help with, through the county attorney's office. What are we going to be able to do to help them? Because sixty percent of their calls are, are D V calls. I mean, hello.
Especially if you're talking about Rochester.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, this is, this is, this is certainly, certainly interesting how we, we, we would do that. We run out of the visitation. I, I get what you're talking about. I get what you're saying.
Yeah. The idea started with, okay, how, how do we sort of piece things together with visitation until we get that, get that state funding? And then, okay, well, this would be sort of an overlap for that, but it also addresses a much larger need.
Right.
Questions?
Well, is, is a competitive in the beginning, is a competitive grant in the beginning.
So.
They're making the money available.
Okay. So, so here's what I'd say. Um, the last round of funding we got, there were three grantees. We were, we were one of them. I've never applied for a grant, haven't gotten. So through OBW. Um, so we have a reasonable chance. And we already know that the, the program director for ICGR kind of likes the idea. Is it a guarantee? Of course not. We, we don't know who are the other, who the other applications are. But we have a really good track record.
Yeah, we can, we have, we have, we have a great track record. Yeah. I can tell you just from, it's still, my colleagues. Well, yeah, I don't know Bob, I remember those. I think Dan was around like. The, uh, one of the things that when we went to cut the budget, when we had feedback in two thousand and ten. One of the things we got rid of was domestic violence. We weren't, we weren't statutory required. And the minute we did that, you know, the communities came in and said, what are you doing? We can't, we don't have the staff to do any of this. You know, all the small, especially those small little towns, they all came screaming, y'all, we can't. Yeah, the northern part of Iowa was a big screen. They were screaming, yelling. And the cities were going, well, wait a minute. Now I see, well, you're going to take it on because we're not, we're not responsible. We want to do this out of the kindness of our hearts. We got budget issues, so you're going to take it back. And anyway, nope. We'll all be up from delegation to delegation. We'll, we'll delegations. You got a choice. You're gonna, you're gonna eat it one way or another. Where, where do you want to eat it? You want to eat it here, you want to eat it in a local community, which is going to cost more money because everybody's going to have to set up their own little
Right.
Fightdoms and kingdoms in order to do it. Some kind of situation you got to hear when you think about it with the visitation center. If the visit, I remember when the visitation center went away. It went away. Weekly, the judge is in here saying, what are you going to do to replace this? I'm not going to replace any of it. Okay. They're gonna, I just, I know we're going to have an increase in population in jail as a result of domestic violence. We all recognize that. Okay. But I don't have the money to fund it. And, you know, the judge has turned around. We got, they got a grant. They went after a grant like a week later after we got, we got rid of it. Then they came back to us and wanted us to run it again because we had the bandwidth to do it. Courts didn't want to do it. So there's a lot, been a lot of history with a lot of this stuff. Yeah.
So, so how much interaction do you have with CASA, if at all?
Um, I just did a training for them a couple of months ago. So, um, we're, we're, we're trying to have a significant overlap both with CASAs and G A Ls. If they still exist. There aren't a whole lot of G A Ls anymore.
Are you having good luck with G A Ls?
Um, well, it just aren't very many, right?
Right.
You said the whole fun board and we do training on, on an annual basis with a pool of maybe thirty of them. And of course, the, the pool has shrunk.
Yeah, because there was a lot of complaints on J A Ls in twenty twelve. I sit on this redress and grievance committee. That we had started in twenty eleven and it was some interesting facts that came out of that. Also, how much lobbying have you done to Jess Edwards and Ken Wyler in finance? Cause I, 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 you know, I sit, I sit in finance or I did sit in finance and, you know, a few, those are the people you gotta get after.
On the by me again?
Jess Edwards, he's the Division Three Chairman.
Okay.
In finance and Ken Wyler is the overall chairman. And they, uh, and actually another one, Keith Earth. And they, you know, they might be able to help you.
Thank you.
At least, yeah. Well, this is a federal grant. I'm not quite sure. I mean, maybe they'll weigh in on it, but.
Well, if there's state money, you know, a lot of times you can attract.
Yeah.
If you spend some, you get more, you know, from the federal government.
I was on the J A, J A board and that when it started to decline, it was because first of all, they weren't being paid properly.
Right.
And the training for them was very ineffective.
Yeah.
So the, it started to decline at that point.
Yeah.
And, um, it was difficult to get. People came in and wanted to be it, but they're on board of the G A L and they just walked away because they were.
One case was, uh, the J A Ls were putting down things to get paid for. And it's supposed to be after the fact and they were paying them before the, the court was along.
That wasn't, that wasn't the problem that we ever had. There was no, no issue with them being paid like that. They were not being paid as well.
And just the amount they were getting paid.
Yeah, they were, they were doing a lot of work that they weren't getting paid for and wasn't being approved.
Yeah, and well, I, you know, I.
But they did the work. They just weren't.
I can remember this one case because it was like thirty thousand dollars that they were, and the, and the, uh.
It was a tough job. I wouldn't have wanted it.
One, one of the things about the virtual family justice center, we're going to have sort of four segments. One will be for victims. One will be for perpetrator services. On the physical side, you could even combine the two, right? Virtually you can. But then this actually be for professionals. And what we want to do is to be able to have, have an online presence for those conversations. You know, to help those different professions, whether it's, you know, G A Ls or CASA and help link them together better.
Well. It'll be a first, so.
We like first. We like first. We do like first.
Well, we started something similar to that. At the Superior Courthouse, one of their back buildings or something was a whole, um, room back there. Where they started a program, like you were, you're talking about, Ron Juan, about the trans, transition of the, the languages and stuff. Now, I was involved with part of that, but I don't, when I left, I don't know what happened to it. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think a hood on justice was the funnier.
All new fields left to explore.
Yeah.
So, so you were going to carry on that?
Yeah, we, we met.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I was just curious because she's right. She, she's coming to scratch a bit, so. Yeah, okay. Well, I don't have any people that are typically, because you've got a running, you can, you can program. The problem with all these, all these, you know, the follow-up of the domestic violence, the visitation is just. You know, I think we've learned our lesson that if you don't have it, it's not a good thing.
Yeah.
It, it just doesn't. I mean, I know, I, I know at least right now, it does in cases where fathers can't see their children because, you know, the wife. They're supposed to give them the kids. They don't give them the kids and I get to this.
Didn't we have a visitation room at the courthouse, at the jail?
No, it was one right down. No, it was right here.
Was it, was it? Was it one downtown at the old courthouse or something?
We had it. No, we have it right now. We have it in Dover.
Is that the old courthouse?
No.
Across from the cemetery.
It's in Hawkins. It's in Hawkins.
That's the struggle.
Which used to, which used to be a, um, a nunnery.
It was a nunnery, right.
Way, way back when. And then later, it was when I first came to New Hampshire in ninety-three, it was owned by Strefford Geisinger. And, and I, that was where I, I worked as a sex offender treatment person. And, you know, I'm back there again.
Yeah.
Full circle.
Full circle.
Well, the beat goes on. Do you guys got any questions to scour again in this budget, visitation budget?
Nope. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment, um, I was just thinking, um, the roadblocks that you had mentioned, the thirty-one roadblocks. And I was just running through that in my head, uh, what you're proposing is revolutionary. Being able to use a computer, um, to access these sort of services. Um, you brought up the issue. I know of a case in the past, um, personally through a friend where their abuser was their transport. And they have one shot to get in, to get to see somebody and to be told, take these papers home and fill them out and then bring them back in is just.
Yeah, that works well.
Sure. So I, I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, you're going to put next, one pair.
Yes, six one oh five.
Okay. Your first next.
All right. So, um, five, just under five hundred and sixty-three thousand of this is funded through the state grant that we apply for every two years. And we currently have sixty-nine high-risk, high-need participants in the drug court program. We're the first adult drug court in the state of New Hampshire. Having to answer any questions, tell y'all about it.
What, what's the amount? Five thirty, what?
Five sixty-two.
Five sixty-two.
Yeah, nine thirteen.
So we're leaving about sixty grand, fifty-two grand out of our pocket.
Yeah, and we're under, uh, a little bit from last year too. We've been able to.
Carrie would have, would have weaseled them out of that other sixty thousand. Yeah, the, the person that runs it on the state came from us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, yeah, Alex. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So how many are we getting? I, I know I got.
We have sixty-nine right now.
Sixty-nine.
A new, a new judge. Just have one.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, we have a new judge, Judge, uh, Liverneis. He's from Delnap County. He's fitting right in.
Is he? Yeah, right. I saw him.
Yeah, I'm going to get them both. We have a new judge, Judge Curran too. So we'll be with them both on Monday.
Yeah. Judges, you got to train them. Anyway, guys, you're on foot. Good thing diverse people from jail. Again, when I respond to ten to one savings, like, yeah.
I won't be the first drug court. Yeah, I remembered Ray, when I called you from the other counties, they wanted to know how drug court was working out. And I did approach you and you talked to them and tell them how to set up a whole court.
You know, part of the problem is, is, and, and this is something that Carrie's done a really good job with. And that is coordinating, um, between the public defender's office, the county attorney's office and, and the court. Drug court doesn't work unless you, you got everybody pulling in the same direction.
Yeah.
And, and that's, you know, that I think is the difficulty. It wasn't that long ago when I, I'd be primitive if I told you I knew the current staff. But we had more people in our drug court than all the other nine counties combined. Uh, you know, simply because they just couldn't.
They, they wrapped their head around it.
No, well.
Some of them don't have the meditation for it. Some of them don't believe it.
And they can't get the, the cooperative effort between, you know, the various branches of, of the criminal justice system. And, and that's, that's, uh, something we've been, we, we were, we did it the right way to overcome that at the beginning.
Well, the funding from the county was a big, was a huge obstacle for some of them, especially the chairs of the delegation. Coming forward and trying to introduce the drug court system.
And a lot of, you just had a lot of. They didn't want to. But now the state's paying for it. Nobody's paying for ninety percent of it. We'll see what happens with that.
I don't know. They're cutting school funding like crazy right now.
I don't think we have any more questions. I've got, you guys have any questions around it?
Wait, six one oh six transitional housing. Um, we are located, for those of you that don't know, next to the, um, the jail across the way. We are on a coast bus route. Uh, we can house up to twenty males and eight females. We're almost all of the time full. Um, and it's a great resource for people who are coming out of jail onto our supervision programs. So they're not having to live on the streets. They're more successful when they have a roof over their head. Um, we can hold them accountable by, when they're there for thirty days, we charge them a portion of their, um, income as rent. And they're, if they can't pay rent, they're required to do community service through the work program. And, um, it's a highly sought, uh, resource.
How many end up on the street?
You know, I will say, not as many as they used to. We have so many resources, I think, for our inmates now. We've done a great job, again, creating those collaborative partners, relationships, that we can find people housing fairly quickly. We have very few that are now showing up on a warming shelter. And those that do are ones that just don't want to live in a sober living environment or mentally can't right now. One day, maybe they will find a reason to be sober, but right now they're just not able to. And those are few and far between. But there, there are a few that show up at the warming centers still. My heart pours for them. It's people we've supervised in the past and they're just not ready.
What else you got, Carrie?
Happy to give you a tour. If you ever want a tour, we'd love to show you around. Uh, that's my last budget.
Yep.
Wow.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
So thank all of you, present and past, that have helped. Really appreciate your support and I appreciated your support all along. Done a great job for the county. Well, thank you for everything you've done. You both have done a lot for us too. So thank you.
Don't forget, she's a Farmington girl.
Hey, yes, I'm proud of it, Ray.
Matter of fact, I played basketball with my dad.
Right.
Long time ago.
I know Judge Farber would always tease me for being from Farmington.
Yeah.
Nice.
You ready to go?
We're getting old.
We can dispatch if you'd like.
You, you're looking at them.
How would you like me?
How about right here?
Okay.
We're going to do dispatch real quick and then we'll do this. And I think I just.
Am I taking someone's seat now?
No, I just.
Right up, I get right up.
I, I think I did that.
I was that little one.
Next door at the Child Advocacy Center, D C S. We're trading off. I had to run out to grab him.
Old, old now?
He's ten months and his sister is three years old and probably rating their candy dish. So it'll be fun later.
So we're doing dispatch first, right?
Yeah, it'll take a second.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so this is one where, uh, Justin and I worked, 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 worked together to, uh, come up with this.
Time before I leave.
Uh, to, uh, work together to, uh, to come up with the final number. And I think, um, as it turns out, you were, you were happy with the disposition.
Yes.
And, uh, remember you wanted me to identify if I made any changes?
Yeah.
Well, this is one that I, I made it, I made some changes and, and, uh, with the biggest increase is, is, um, your fees in outside services. Why don't you talk about that?
So fees and outside services, we have increases in power rent. A lot of that is due to our new radio system. We're actually paying rent to be at a few sites. Now that we have the more robust system. We're seeing the, the full impacts of that now. Now we're fully operational. And secondary to that, uh, we have some similar challenges like, um, the MIS department was talking about. We are at the end of, uh, three-year cycles for a lot of our maintenance agreements for firewalls. Uh, virtual servers and, uh, switch maintenance. And same as the rest home and other county operations, uh, we have to meet FBI standards. So we have to make sure that data is secure. And we're at the point where we need to, uh, redo those three-year agreements for service on those. And, uh, our vendor does it in three-year blocks. So that's we for another three years of extended service and replacement.
But I mean, um, for somebody that saw the difference in towers in Tenerife firsthand, uh, you know, I, I swear the tower used to be fifty feet and now it's like.
Yeah, you wouldn't believe it's the same height.
It is?
It is.
It really doesn't look it at all. Uh, but that whole area is all, um, you know, is all redone. Uh, to go along with that three-plus million dollar investment in enhancing the radio systems primarily for the benefit. Well, not primarily, exclusively for the benefit of the towns, which we paid for, for, with ARPA funding.
They, it's appreciated. I was talking to Farmington PD yesterday and they said their reception is excellent. You know, a few dead spots, but you know, with, with a handheld.
We knew it wouldn't be a hundred percent, but it's drastically better than anything.
Yeah.
And I tell you, it is important.
Yes.
When I remember when I, a long time ago, when I was in London Dairy, we, we'd have a couple of dead spots, but, uh, it was nothing like it was. I mean, our, we would.
We, we had about thirty percent portable coverage for this project and now we're at ninety-nine.
So we had seventy percent dead spots with, with portable radios.
So are we complete on that, uh, seven hundred and some thousand that we spent?
No, we've not placed that order yet.
Well, we, we don't want to place it until we got the money. I mean, we've got the approval.
Yeah.
But I want the cash.
Yeah.
No offense to the fence.
You don't trust them?
No, sir, I don't. I'm sorry. I really don't. And, and, uh, uh, so when I get the cash, we'll, we'll, I, I Justin's allocated it. Um, uh, I just need a, a, I've asked him when he has a chance to just give it to me in a different format, uh, but he hasn't, when he has a chance. Well, I don't understand what, you know, those devices are, so.
Is it primarily hardware?
It's hardware for the police officers and firefighters. So it's the portable radios they carry and radios.
Okay, so, so it's off-site.
So, uh, previously, we did the infrastructure.
Right.
The stuff that we talk on, they talk to us on. Now it's the devices the guys are using. Anyone that needed upgrades, we reached out to, got their needs assessed.
Great, no. No, can you talk to state police now or with, or you have to switch?
Unless they're encrypted.
Unless they're encrypted, well, crypto's important. That's what I do as a service.
Yep, uh, that's part of this upgrade as well. The subscribers is adding an encryption.
Because that's one of the problems they had in Butler, Pennsylvania. They couldn't talk to each other.
Correct. Uh, but yes, we have. Uh, New Hampshire's pretty well established for that. We have what's called the statewide matrix and I can bore you to death with that, but every, every radio in the state has the same allotment of channels in it. So we all have one common spot. We can all talk to each other on.
Guard, basically a guard channel.
Yeah, potentially.
Thank you.
And that was a result of the, the Draga incident that came about.
Yeah, you remember that well.
Hey, Will.
So that's the primary change in that, um, and there was a vacant position that Justin reluctantly, and I, I agreed to, to, uh, cut out.
Reluctant, reluctant.
Well, he, he was, yeah. But we, but we came to an agreement.
Was that one of the issues we put in last year, you know, for?
No.
There you go.
That one was already gone, so, but, but they've lived without this for, for a period of time, so Justin feels they'll be fine without it.
Just take good care of Rollins before me.
They're getting some good equipment.
I know they are.
Yeah, the chief sees me once a week and I swear, he's on me all the time.
He doesn't like the loner, I assume.
He's operating off of some of our equipment.
I know.
Uh, while, while we're waiting for this money to come.
Northern towns stop going to Walmart for the nine-dollar item and it's a mess.
They're still trying to, but every time I catch them, I take them off.
Oh, good.
So Will, you know, we think this is the last piece of, of really making this, uh, you know, the absolute last piece of the solid system.
And Kelly and I being in direct support of these towns is helping tremendously. We're able to catch things like the antennas you're talking about and other issues before they become a big problem.
Yeah. So any chance of the cities getting, uh, part of this?
Yes, the city of Somerville and city of Dover both have needs. Uh, Rochester just recently replaced all of their gear. They didn't have a whole.
To be compatible with yours?
Yep.
That's good.
When, uh, city Rochester built a new system, they bought new radios with it.
Great.
But, uh, Somerville did identify some needs and sort of the city of Dover, and we're able to accommodate that with the.
Justin was kind enough to list this stuff and, but I don't understand it. So he's gonna break it down and would understand the workload for me.
The motor roller, I already crafted that for me. I understood.
Okay, I just needed to understand.
And he split it up by town.
Yeah, that's great. I just need to understand that a little bit.
What is that money expected?
Uh, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I wish Diane was here. Uh, I'll let you know next time I see you. She'll know better than she would know. If I told you, I'd just be guessing. We'll, we'll let her tell us. We've completed all our paperwork. Everything they needed from us is done and they have it. But, you know, the feds aren't the quickest.
Nope.
I know a lot of the tunnel leak hasn't gotten theirs yet. They had a, a similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, the congressional staff came through on those tours. I mean, they, perhaps came through.
They did.
The money from Shaheen and what money from.
And Pappas, yeah. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have gotten it without either one of their endorsements.
Right.
Yep.
Well, that was great that we didn't have the pass, so.
We did get Representative Pappas out to form another site.
Okay. All right, well, what do we got next, buddy? We got a few here.
We have the county attorney's office, Mr. Chairman.
I have them, uh, Janet gave them to me before she left. Pass out.
So you're gonna ball, yeah. I don't.
Alrighty.
Okay, so we're, um, essentially status quo, you'll notice that the VA line, uh, is less about sixty thousand dollars. It's because we moved it to, excuse me, the victim witness advocate's line was moved to victims' assistant staff investigators. There was a, um, two different budgets for the purposes of some grant funding that we had that we ended up merging last year. There was a VA that was left under sort of a, her own line item that we decided to merge. Um, it seemed to make more sense. But, uh, the other increase for assistant attorneys is the only other sort of outlier here. Um, my salary was set by the, as you all know, um, the, um, delegation. So that's not an increase that I'm seeking. It was set by them. But the fifty-one thousand dollars for the assistant attorneys um, seems like a increase in staff or raises. It's actually not. When the budget was done last year, there was a position that was inadvertently left off because it was open. So when we went into last year's budget for twenty twenty-four, we were actually less a position that should have been in the budget. Um, and if you remember, um, from being part of the delegation budget meetings, uh, that I had actually asked, worked pretty hard to get around like twenty-five thousand dollars in raises to spread over like five people. And then we ended up, um, having a position removed from the budget. So that was, um, an era and certainly frustrating. We did resume that position. We didn't wait until June to fill it. So although it seems like we're asking for more money, we're not. We're asking for the same position we had in twenty twenty-three to exist again. Um, we did save, you wanna think about it that way, the county, um, half a salary by only funding it for half the year last year. Um, but it is a, a position that we, um, still have and have somebody still.
Are you full now?
Yes, uh, I should say, we had somebody that's last day was Friday. Um, and I have an individual that I am hoping to make an offer to, um, for the same salary.
What happened, Mr. Chairman, is, is, um, when Tom left, and I was putting the budget together with Emily, there was, it wasn't clear wha- what the status was of, uh, of that position. So if you remember, we brought it to you guys, uh, to you, uh, to the commissioners and, and you had authorized, uh, um, you know, restoring that. It wasn't really, it was really restoring. It wasn't adding. It was just keeping the same amount as twenty, as it was in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
But the delegation had already kind of met and, and decided, so we just decided that we would put it in and make it up elsewhere.
We haven't, I said this, uh, at the last meeting, we haven't lost any, uh, individuals to another prosecution office, which is awesome. The person that left Friday wants to decide he wanted to be a full-time cop. So he's going to do that for the town of Durham, actually, so we'll still have him around. But, um, you know, not that routine situation we've been experiencing over the years of people leaving to go to the A G's office or the public defender's office or other counties. We're sort of, um, at that level with salaries now, but we were not above, but competitive.
Do you have any idea what your caseload is for a county right now?
So it depends on the, uh, type of cases, but, um, the E C R attorney has upwards of two hundred. I think the rest of the felony attorneys, for the most part, around. Yeah, like a hundred, hundred fifty, depending on, you know, you have more cases that are less serious, the more experienced attorneys will have fewer cases, but they're more intensive work-wise.
Yeah.
Um, so still pretty.
Still pretty hefty.
Yeah, it's pretty hefty. We're plugging along. I don't know if there was any other, uh, case-specific questions. I don't think anything else was out of the ordinary on the budget. Um, we're always kind of trying to keep mindful of our prosecution costs. That's one of our bigger expenses. Um, but we're usually right within that.
Just wanna test our eyesight.
I don't know what that is. You can blame Janet for that. I'm not sure. I know. I think that's just the salary rollups, but for some reason, very small, but that is included somewhere else in here, so it should be good.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell Janet to make sure in the back. That just shows everybody. So it shows, shows it here, too. I don't know what that is. I can't, can't really feel we're gonna be competitive.
Yeah, I, I do feel we're competitive. Um, you know, I get this last round of this person, they gave their notice. They give, they tend to give longer notices, which I appreciate. Uh, and we had an applicant from another county attorney's office, so I'm hoping to make him an offer. Yeah, exactly. So I always like, I don't poach people, but when they come to me, I obviously can't help but want to have the experienced people in these roles for a lot of reasons, but, yeah. All right, is there any other case-specific questions? I can go get Kate Emerson to do the C A C budget. She's currently watching my children next door, so I have to switch out with her to grab them. But I'll send her in if that's okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Real pleasure, real pleasure to work with.
Oh, it's hard to get good help.
It's, it, and it, and it's a constant thing, you know, and it's, it's a constant thing with inmates, uh, that end up in the hospital and us trying to get them released so that we don't get, you know, tagged with the medical bill and, and, um, you know, we always had that relationship with Tommy, so between myself, Chris Brackett, and Emily, um, the calls are certainly, well, with Chris and I, they're daily, uh, at night, but with Emily, it's probably, you know, once or twice a week, you know, asking for some help to. And it's funny, they always go to the hospital, not during business hours.
You could say.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Did I miss anybody? Ray, do you need one?
No, thanks, sir. I, I kinda got it memorized.
Fair enough.
What's your name?
No, it was a county fan.
Okay. Oh, did I skip you?
No.
Hi, everyone. I don't think I've met everybody, but my name's Kate Emerson. I work directly for, uh, County Attorney Gerard, who was just in here. And I run the, uh, Child Advocacy Center, which is under the county attorney's budget. Um, and it is just over here, right through these doors. Um, I don't know, uh, I can just tell you briefly a little bit about what we do. I'm not sure how much County Attorney Gerard touched on it. But, um, we provide forensic interview services for, uh, children who have, um, experienced sexual assault, uh, physical abuse, witnessed domestic violence, and then we also do those forensic interviews for adults that have been sexually assaulted as well. Uh, basically, the forensic interview is the product that a prosecutor would take to court to prosecute a case. So it is the statement that the child makes. Uh, we see mostly children. Um, adults make up about a third of our caseload. Uh, this year to date, we've seen two hundred and thirty cases. Um, so we are pretty busy. Um, and really, uh, they are, because of the way that, the nature of these crimes and the way that they are committed, um, especially a child, that statement is really the only evidence that a prosecutor may have in order to prosecute one of those cases. And it's very important because of the nature of these crimes and of the, because of the suggestibility of some children that these interviews are done in a nationally recognized, um, protocol-based model. So we very strictly adhere to that. Um, it's very important on both sides of the coin, right? So it's important that if this is happening to a child or an adult, that we are able to respond appropriately uh, within the criminal justice system with our law enforcement partners to hold people accountable. It's equally as important to make sure that if those allegations are not true, that we have a way to really thoroughly vet that out so that there are no, you know, false accusations, false prosecutions and things like that. So it is really a two-sided coin. Uh, we work with every law enforcement department here in Strafford County, so all of the departments, including the sheriff's department. Um, we do see cases from the jail occasionally as well. So again, for that two-sided coin, it's important there. Um, and we, kind of the fundamental thing that we also do in those forensic interviews is bring all of the investigative players to the table, um, so that everybody is present to observe that forensic interview. So it is done live, again, right next door by a trained forensic interviewer. Uh, a detective and at times a D C Y F representative, if appropriate, are watching the interview happen live. And so that child or adult only has to speak about what happened to them one time. That interview is memorialized so that there's an accurate depiction of what was asked and what was said. And again, proof that we're following that best practice model. Uh, there is a Child Advocacy Center in every county in New Hampshire, so it is something that, um, is really important, again, for these cases in order to be prosecuted. Uh, we also make some referrals, um, for medical, mental health services. Those are at, you know, no cost to the county. Those are through linkage agreements with various, uh, other agencies. Um, and because of all the things that we do, we have been three times recognized as nationally accredited. We meet ten best practice standards. We most recently just did that this summer. Um, and so our budget, uh, really encompasses just our three staff. Um, so there's myself, there is a full-time forensic interviewer, and then a family support specialist that does follow-up services and makes those referrals that I was speaking of. And also is really instrumental in keeping families on board throughout the criminal justice process. It can be a very long time from when a forensic interview happens to when a case is prosecuted. Uh, for instance, County Attorney Gerard is in trial right now, um, for a sexual assault case. And that interview happened, hello, in twenty twenty-two at our center. Uh, so this is just, the wheels of justice turn slowly, especially with these cases. Uh, cause we only have one shot. We really need to make sure we're getting them right. Um, and again, equally, we need to make sure that we are weeding them out in an earlier stage when appropriate, um, if it is something that is found to not be true. Um, so that is also important. Um, there are some, um, in addition to the staffing, there's just kind of a, uh, basic request, um, for things like training we do because of our accreditation, we're mandated to do certain hours of training every year. So we have some funding built in for that, um, and office supplies. Um, our budget's actually a little bit lower this year. Uh, last year, we had to apply for the site review for that national accreditation. That costs three thousand dollars, so we're taking that money out of our budget for this year. Um, it also does look like we are, um, upping two of our salaries. That's actually a wage adjustment that was made July one for some grant funding that we have. So it's, it's actually already taken care of. It's not that we're asking for more money currently. It's already been allocated. Uh, we do receive, um, two pretty sizable grants. One is from the state of New Hampshire, um, that supports some of our staff funding. Um, and then the second one is a federal grant. It's called the, uh, it's called a Voca grant. And those are penalty dollars, um, from federal crimes that are paid into and then distributed to victim services organizations uh, throughout the country. And that Voca grant pays for the entirety of one of our staff and about half of another staff. Um, and then a few little, um, like subscriptions and licenses and things like that for our, um, forensic interview storage system.
Okay. What's the total of those grants?
So it shifts from year to year, Ray. So, uh, right now, our Voca grant is just under eighty thousand dollars. And then the state funding is, uh, that we're actually utilizing currently is about twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I just started, I, I mean, I knew what it was, but I thought it'd be better if you said it than me.
I appreciate the T S, thank you.
Yeah, so about a hundred thousand dollars of this budget is offset by, you know, grant money that comes in. You know, the biggest thing, of course, and, and, and you hit on it, is these, these young people, you know, who have been victimized, only have to go through this once when in the past, you know, it might be four or five interviews, um, you know, before they, they ended up in court.
Yeah.
And I, and I think the, the, the substance of the interviews also encourages a number of pleas.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, when, when, when the victims, when, I forget I said that, when the perpetrator's attorney sees the results of, of the interview.
They want negotiated.
They wanna negotiate a deal because they realize how, you know, what, what a jury's gonna see when that young person testifies in court.
Yeah. She said it was two hundred and thirty roughly this last year?
This year, that's what we've done year to date. Uh, last year, we topped out right at, uh, two forty. And twenty twenty was our busiest year for whatever, you know, I, I thought the pandemic would be the opposite, but we saw two hundred and ninety-nine cases that year. Um, so.
That's a lot.
The forensic interviewer, will that be a sane, will sane nurses be involved with us?
So we, um, we work in conjunction with sane nurses a lot of times. Um, they are separate. So the forensic interviewer is in, um, is in a nursing position, but she is the person that's specially trained to do. Yes, exactly.
Now, would that, is that reflected in the budget also?
No, we don't, cause that's paid for by the state if there is a sane exam or if a child needs a specialized medical exam. So those are the things that we facilitate and that our family support specialist facilitates, but we do all of that by M O U, so it's no cost to the county.
Extremely important for the young adults.
It's very important. And so there's, there's a special program actually through Dartmouth Titchcock Hospital that that's all they do. Yeah. Yes, with Dr. Gladstone, yeah, so, yeah, I know. Great. Um, any questions? I tried to, I know you guys have been here. Okay, if anyone ever wants a tour, like I said, we are right next door, but happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Any questions? Any questions?
Happy holidays. Nice to see you all.
Do you want to do your next?
Sure, that'd be great.
Yeah, you can be next.
How you doing?
We have a little disagreement. I wouldn't call it a disagreement.
It's changed.
Oh, never mind.
You might want to, yeah.
Why don't I just let you talk?
So, um, yes, I what Ray, I think is. Talking about is the we had an open position that I was hoping to fill. And I was in the mind then of just, you know, eliminating that. But then I found out that our deputy registrar was going to retire. And I thought that that would probably be within the next year. She's confirmed to me that she is. That she's going to stay the two years that I'm there, you know, and she'd like to do that. So I think that we can address this in twenty twenty five. And try to get maybe, I think we're going to need another staff member then to be able to transition in.
Twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six, I'm sorry. Excuse me. So we have an agreement. Yeah, so it's fine. Yep, everything I I agree with everything that, you know, we looked at. I looked at it again and. So we're good.
I'll understand two years, right?
Yeah, well, unless something comes up in the meantime, if it does, we'll cross that bridge when we get there and I'll come to you. And ask for you to reconsider, you know, because we would need to have someone else in to start training. We just can't.
The the other issue is, Mr. Chairman, if if. Real estate grows unexpectedly, you know, we can always go back to the executive committee. And and, you know, trade off. Help for in in increase in revenue. So, you know, it's not like.
By the way, where where are we sitting? We're we're over.
We're over. We are over. We're over. I have the numbers from compared to last year. We're at right now one million, one thirty seven approximately. So about sixty three or so up from last this time last year.
But remember, real estate tends to finish. With a bang at at the end of December and everybody wants that tax write off. So.
We're hopeful. Yeah, but I think we'll we'll definitely meet the projection of the one million two hundred. I mean, I think that that's not it. That's not an issue. For this year.
And we cooperatively raised it to one, two fifty.
I mean, the market's stable. It's always the is inventory is always an issue. And I'm hoping, you know, that the mortgage rates are going to stay steady and hopefully go down a little bit. So, you know, it's cautiously optimistic for twenty twenty five. Right, but it's always inventory. That's always it. And but I, you know. It's under the outside expenses.
It's it's two two nine.
Oh, yeah, two two nine. No, it's, uh, you said, yeah, it is. Sorry, you've made it an idea, Ray. Yeah, fees and outside services. Sorry, it's it's subsumed in that. And I'm happy to say that we've been working very hard on getting the scanning done. And by the end of the year, we'll hopefully have. Online, the images from seventeen ninety forward, which is, you know, great.
They should keep my King's Grant there. Those aren't going to complete that?
No, we have, well, hopefully, we have. Tom working on that, which is it's much. It's, you know, it's it's much better financially to do it that way instead of we had looked at hiring someone to do all that. And it was just exorbitant, you know, the price when we compared it to Tom coming in one day a week. You know, and we help out when we can. So I'm hoping that we might even be able to be finished with Tom in the first four, three or four months. You know, of the year, so we'll see. Yeah, it's great.
So restoration of books, how many did you end up putting in?
I think we only can do six this year. Because it's gone up, it's expensive.
And how many do we have left?
About a hundred and forty five. Yeah, because we found some other ones that were, yeah. And you know, the thing is now we also have to pay the shipping and it was just dollars a year, you know, the shipping and handling.
That was one of the things we cut out, you know, the big, the big ask. They get rejected, so.
But that's okay. We'll just keep going forward every year, you know. But I, you know, it's my obligation to let you know what your options were, you know, for that, so.
We tried.
We tried. But it's, yeah, it's okay. We'll keep moving forward.
So you got four in here, five?
There's it's it's more, correct me if I'm wrong anywhere, it's really more accurate to talk about how much money we have. Than how many books, because there might be a year when thirty thousand is only five books. You know, because of the, you know, we're trying to get the worst ones done first, so thirty thousand might be seven books. You know, so it's it's just.
Right. But but it keeps going up, the price keeps going down, you know, the number we can get for that amount goes down. And that I don't think is a surprise. That's just the way it is, so. Do you have any other, do you have any questions?
There's no state grants or federal grants.
You know, it's required by statute. So the answer that I've gotten from these places, the is that. The county is responsible for paying for those books. Now, obviously, it's different, like with the prison, when they got the grant, I think the Moose Grant at one time, because there's no obligation or statute. For those books to be restored and preserved. But with hours, you know, it's required mandated by law that those books be restored and preserved.
That's about a month. Seems so with the state archives or through the state archives, you should, I mean, that is an archive of the state.
They don't, they don't restore and preserve books, though. They only maintain them. They only house them. They don't do any restoration. That is a very specialized, you know, field to be in. And there's not many places that actually do it.
That's our history. I mean, that's.
That's what I've always said. That's what I've always.
I mean, it's, I don't.
That's what I've always.
It's fascinating reading.
It is the blueprint of our county and it's the blueprint of the state and it's it's very important.
That's why the money was in the budget.
Yes, yeah. Well, that's okay. We'll keep moving forward and I'm just very happy. We're getting all the scanning done also. I'm really proud of that. Yeah, I think that's fantastic. And we have such a great, you know, group of people working with us now. We have two relatively new staff members and they're wonderful. They've really worked out well. And I can't say enough about them, you know, and everyone is very. Conscientious, you know, we anytime we have paper that, you know, that's used, we don't just get a new piece of paper. We'll use it to, you know, write notes on an old piece of paper. So we're really careful and those things add up. So it's something that we're very conscientious of. And it's there's they're a really great group of people, very personable and helpful to the, you know, anyone who's calling and needing help. And I've been serving as the president of the Registry and Deeds Association now for the past about three years. And I get a lot of calls, which I'm really happy to be able to help people and help other registers, you know, with any questions that they have. So. We're fortunate right now that we have great staff. They they're really the backbone. We're definitely going to miss Lynn also. She's wonderful, so.
She don't seem to be that old.
She's not. She's just worked a long time. So.
Yeah, you know, plus, you know, change in family situation.
She's a grand, she's a grandmother, so she's.
Well, I'm good. I don't know about everybody else.
Thank you. If you want to come in and, you know, look at anything, obviously, you know, we're happy to go through everything with you. Thank you. Good. Yeah, just we're happy to help anyway.
What's that one, boss?
Shut her store.
They're trying to find it.
You know, the bottom line is it's it's. There's a change in around in the staffing, the way we've done it. And and obviously, food prices have gone up.
All right, thank you. Nice to see everyone. Thank you, Merry Christmas. If I don't see. Thank you, Ray.
I'm listening.
The salaries have gone down and the food's gone up. Yeah, food's gone up. Yeah, the way it is, surprise, surprise. Go to a grocery store.
I think all's been ready for it. Downstairs. One a day. All right, you guys, you don't have any, you guys have any questions about the cafeteria downstairs? They do a great job. You might have a topic, keep it running, the building happy. Okay, I don't know what else is left over there.
Yeah, we can do them both. How about these two seats? There we go. Please sit. So primarily. I'll make it really simple, Mr. Chairman, these ladies will give you all the details, but food's gone up and and. And plastics have gone up for two, two reasons. One is a market assessment. The other thing is whenever we have COVID, we're no dishware. And and, you know, and up until we get. The new dishwasher installed too, we we're never a hundred percent sure when our current, which is in the capital. We're we're never a hundred percent sure when we're going to have a problem, you know, keeping the temperature up and that operating properly. So you never know when we have to go back to to plastics. But when we, when COVID goes. We don't have, we don't have a choice. So. You're on, ladies.
Why don't you just introduce yourselves to the people?
I'm Kim Perkins. I'm the Assistant Food Service Director. Um, so, yeah, Ray summed it up pretty well, the paper. The other supply line is pretty far over for those reasons. And. Food has, food will go up about three percent this upcoming year. Eggs will be around eleven percent. We use a lot of eggs in our building. So we tried to make a little bit of a bigger adjustment for that for twenty twenty five.
What do you pay for it?
I want to say it's somewhere's around. It's like ninety dollars a case now. It's pretty high. It's. Uh, no, it's more like, more like sixteen or eighteen dozen. How many flats are in that case? It's pretty big, but it's it's still, it's a lot of money.
It is. I checked the buying bulk. We're not going down to the local farm stand to buy eggs we're buying, you know.
Right.
Tens of thousands of eggs a year. Turner, Turner's right there. Yeah, maybe we can give us some of those chickens and get the eggs in here. Oh, she's frigging chicken, damn good. Kill them.
Yeah, I want to do that.
Actually, they don't kill them. They or he doesn't kill them. He drops them on the line. Yeah, whatever he's doing with them.
There's really not too much more as far as the Riverside budget that is to really make note of unless you have any questions for us.
You know, I'll tell you a little secret. This is going to affect the two new commissioners. You girls do a fabulous job over there. Running that dietary department, because if you want to know what I give you, you want to hear the bitching about the mode. Okay. Whether it's in the jail or whether in nursing home. South First County Commissioner, twenty five thirty converts a week being in fruit. And you guys do a fabulous job. I I don't have, I might want to have. The other thing that they don't, you have to recognize, we're serving over a thousand meals a day now. I tell people all the time, you ever had a bad meal at home? You get you get three meals a day. Okay, well, you're serving a thousand meals a day. What's the why you're going to have a bad meal? That's what I used to tell people. Yeah, by your house, yeah. Play it on my house then, while I go to restaurants.
I think that we have a really great variety at our nursing home and we can't take credit for that. That was, a lot of that was in place before we came on board, but. It's it's a very good menu.
And the residents participate in the menu.
They do.
Some of them have that special diet, have to buy special food for them. Right, and swallowing a lot of, you you do a lot of that.
We do. Yeah.
Not a lot of salt, so.
Yeah, well, you guys have any questions for these ladies? I think we're good. You're good?
Okay, and so then we have the Court Jester budget, Court Jester.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't know you guys are out there, so I I get it. I'm sorry.
You're sorry. Food's up. I'm going to cut out a few more cupcakes. You guys were wanting to send food over here all the time to the delegation.
Yes.
Very good over the years. Fourteen years worth.
Oh, well, we probably can't take credit for most of that.
You can. It's your, it's your department. All right, well, ladies, happy holidays. Especially the macaroni and cookies.
That's our, okay, it's our bread vendor, but it is kind of a funny name.
On upcoming events, hey, girls, nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Uh, upcoming events, we have, we have to award the tax participation on next Wednesday. Usually what happens is that's a five minute meeting. What we're doing, we're borrowing money. To operate the county, because they operate from, for six months in the next year. We talked about that last meeting. We usually come on and come in and we're here for five minutes, we open the bids and we award it. So if you guys want to come to that, that's fine. It doesn't really, I mean, we should only be here for five minutes unless Ray's got some budgets that we can work on. Which I'm going to try to find out, because we're going to be meeting next Thursday for the pizza party. And we're going to have budgets that day. So probably what the smartest thing to do is just work on Thursday as much as we can. You know, maybe we have to sit, maybe we have to meet after the pizza party to get through some budgets. You'd be going to sleep, though.
So George, so when does, when does your, the the three current commissioners, when does your term expire? Midnight?
January eighth. January eighth.
January eighth.
Actually, this is.
Midnight, midnight.
No, there's no, no.
Not like the speaker.
It doesn't work that way.
The rest of us.
It doesn't work that way.
Okay, that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking.
January eighth, when they, their their term expires when they take their oath of office. If they don't show up, then these two continue.
There you go.
Please show up, Joe.
Well, it it's good that we all know that because.
Yeah, January. So. The plan right now, unless it changes, I don't, you know, is that we're going to commit on Wednesday and just sign, you know, what was the bid for the tan? You commit for that to go on. Five to ten minutes. And then I'm going to push everything off if I can till Thursday.
So you're going to have a meeting Wednesday and Thursday.
We have next week, right, Wednesday is the two with the tan.
Wednesday is just.
It's a five minute meeting. So if you want to come in for it, you can, but.
Oh, it's nice to see you.
Oh, it's nice to see, you know.
There's not really much to see. We open up the envelopes, the bid on the tans.
And then we.
It'll probably end up being Northway Bag again, hopefully.
Usually get.
Two, three. We don't get a lot.
What? I think one comes in so much lower than all the others.
But, you know, we'll see what the rate is, so whatever that rate is for that first six months, it's twenty-four million that we're borrowing. It's bid, the bid is what it is, we accept the bid, the lowest one. And that'll get reflected in the budget, we'll make adjustments to the twenty-five budget on the interest expense, which we went over last time you guys were in here. Um, depending on what that rate is, it'll be reflected in the budget.
It's too bad you can't pony with the state. They they were getting two and a half.
But it just depends on what's going on.
One point nine?
They won't let us pony with it, we we can't mix.
Well, you can't mix the money, but you can.
Because of our bond rating, they won't allow that.
Or is higher than that?
I don't know, I know, I was just, uh, double, double A, one.
Which depends who you're talking.
Once we retired the bond, a post correction.
Yeah, it went up, but they're going to re-rate us this year. They're supposed to be get re-rated this year. Yeah, movers will re-rate us this year, they'll re-rate us before we go up for that five million dollar bond. But, you know, we don't have any, we don't have any long-term debt, we got no debt.
Well, we, we got to start talking about that restaurant.
Seriously?
Yeah, seriously, I'm serious.
We were serious last year.
Not a hundred and seventy million, that ain't going to fly. That isn't going to fly, there's too much money. That same, that same home you were talking about was thirty-eight million. That's the one in Carroll County.
Oh, yeah, but that was how many years ago?
No, that was, well, that's that's what it cost him nineteen, no, well, it cost him nineteen.
Half the size of ours.
Right, well, you double it. And then we, now, if you want to talk sixty-nine million, I'm ready.
There's no way.
Well, that's what, that's what we go for.
Sean, hold top. Don't let him, don't let, don't let.
You know, did you go up and look at?
Carroll County did not, but I know the time between when that one was built, when this one's built, crisis has gone crazy.
The other restriction we have is the new CMS regulation that came into effect two years ago, that nurses' stations have to have direct line of sight with residents.
Well, that's, that was waived, that was waived in Carroll County. So, and it doesn't make sense if they're in in the, uh, they make them in parts. And they, and that passed regulation. That they did the same thing.
So we got any other old business you want to talk about right now?
I do. Uh, did Janet hand out the packet, uh, containing the information about the boilers? I'm asking for a wa, uh, bid waiver on the boilers.
She did not, no, Douggy, so we'll, we'll, we'll push it out till next week. We'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
You and I'll take care of it.
Okay, great.
Okay.
All right.
How big are the boilers?
Uh, the one that I have, uh, on the east side is an inch and a quarter pipe, so it's variable between two hundred and twenty thousand B T U and seven hundred and fifty thousand B T U. Um, what we did is back in April, I submitted it for a multi-year capital plan, we had a little bit of a week and we thought we had some time, it was everybody's opinion that it would last, well, it hatched last week, and we're talking hatched, it sprayed. Um, it is draining the entire west side of the, uh, of the Alms House right now, so we've got our finger in there to keep it going. Um, the problem that I'm having is the lead time on getting a boiler system, so I'm.
Can you change the section?
Uh, it's all the sections, it's the actual plant, just where the sections go together.
Oh, no.
Yeah, this is part of the, um, chemical treatment that we're asking for, to slow that sort of corrosion down. Um, but we run out of time unfortunately on that, and now the one on the east side is doing the exact same thing, so give or take, we're we're coming up on the east side.
Who's your contractor?
Whoever's available to put one in, we have two quotes available, one from J M S for twenty-eight thousand per boiler, and then we have one from Hart for twenty-three five. Hart's ready to go, Hart's been really good to us, Hart came in with a more solid quote, looking at the entire the entire area, laying down a steel plate, making sure it's done properly, incorporating the circular pumps and fixing some other stuff. J M S was just a straight replacement with a high-efficiency condensating boiler, which they say fifteen to twenty years lifespan with about a fifteen percent efficiency over what we have right now. And with the cost of natural gas, I think we'll probably see that back in about three or four years. Our natural gas budget has doubled for for the county over the past two years. For about a hundred and eighty for Riverside to almost three hundred right now, and our uses is is flat.
Where's, um, J M S out of?
J M S is out of Hudson, New Hampshire, Hart is out of Greenland.
I know.
Yeah. But they've been. There there's been a lot of, um, entanglements that they found in here, that they have been able to come in, assess it, take care of it.
And J M S is a twenty-eight?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay, so what's the lead time on the boiler?
Uh, we're looking at three to four weeks according to F W Web, just a phone call to F W Web for that exact model that those vendors are looking for. I mean, I can certainly put it on the two eighty, uh, budget for repair, but that cuts into Riverside and cuts into the things we need to do next year there.
So, so Ray, what's your plan? Do you want to just wait till next week?
Well, I I I need to get more details, I mean, yes, Doug has alerted me to it.
I brought it to him last last minute today.
I I I I wanted to look at the capital sheet, I and sit down with Douggy on that. As you might have expected, today was a busy day getting everything prepared for you guys, so we could do as many as we could. But Douggy and I will, will, we can jump on it tomorrow, you're here.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, we'll jump on it tomorrow and and, uh, I'll 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 be in touch.
Yeah, okay, I'll put it in a presentation, so we have all the numbers and exactly where we're at.
Yeah. Okay, whatever, that right, guys?
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any other old and new business? Any questions or comments from the public? Not hearing any. We're going to skip item eight because I don't think there's anything to talk about at this point.
No, sir, there's, I I have nothing.
Uh, so, challenge a motion to recess the delegation meeting, or I'll just clear a recess. And we'll come back and do it again.